Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please remain standing for a moment of silence for Carol McDonald, mother of Brian McDonald, Clinton Middle School teacher, and Philip Mercurio, father of Michelle Gray, Clinton Middle School Guidance Administrative Assistant. Thank you. We'll open up the school committee meeting for Monday, October 28th. I will entertain a motion to approve the bills. Any discussion, conversation, questions? No in favor? Thank you. Entertain a motion to review the approval of minutes from October 7th. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Do we have any public comment this evening? Being none, we will close public comment. Student rep. Thank you, Mr. Zerbeck. CTA. Thank you. PTA? Yeah, thanks. Thank you. Sure, absolutely. Sure, can. No, we're good.
We are currently at a 141 members. Preliminary numbers from our trivial catalog that we ran at CES and CMS. We raised over $9,000.
Awesome.
And that was only with 12% register of 1,600 kids. So, we're gonna work harder and try and get more involved because the more we get involved, the more we bring back to the table to help pay for things. The next scholastic book fair happens at CMS, December 6th, 2nd to 6th. We will be sending out newsletters and now for volunteers to donate an hour or two to help the kids pick out books, save us from some insanity. All help is needed. The downtown Halloween Rock was so much fun and a great success. We handed out, I think it was more than 2,000 packets of just, we did teal pumpkin friendly items as well as candy. Ms. Frizzle was there, as well as two giant inflatable mummies that made the paper. We are looking to put in a request to have a snowball dance at CMS for the elementary school students, pre-K to 4, on Friday, January 24th. Yes, we're already planning for the year. We never sleep. So we will be reaching out when it gets closer to that for volunteer opportunities and then if there's any push list items. In front of you is a proposal that was presented to us to bring to the public school system from the Jackson Athlete Coffee Cabin. We have worked with them two years now for teacher appreciation. The proposal that they are presenting is to basically offer to have the coffee cabin here in the mornings at the high school, the middle school, and then the elementary school admin benefit building area. And then any sales, they kick back 10% to the PTA to start with, depending upon sales. It can be increased at a later negotiating time. The hope was that they would offer a quick and easy option for teachers to get coffee, hot or cold, on their way into school at the various buildings, as well as to help raise funds for the school. Nancy said that she is a prime of mine, so she felt comfortable offering it to the kids in schools because her primary worker, Celine, actually is friendly and friendly with the local community. And Celine's the one that actually wants to run it and do it on Wednesday to Friday.
Is that perfect? Did I say hi?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
You didn't interrupt me, but she was waving to somebody.
She didn't know she was gonna make her little one little sick, so. But yeah, so she's spearheading it. She'd be the one that'd be the lovely smiling face every morning. She does great. She actually does the whole home day consistently and runs the cabin there. She's the hardworking backbone of it. I had presented the proposal to Dr. Meyer and he asked that we officially bring it to you to look at, to go over, questions, concerns, input, the whole surveying. It's kind of an open-ended, based on timeframe, location, whatever works best for the school district. It's a mobile coffee cabin, so it can be logistically put wherever is applicable or needed and out of the way and not interrupting the flow.
So I'd say conceptually, they ran it by me and I'm not opposed to trying it. I think it's a kind of a neat idea. You know, as I mentioned though, I think that the one thing we would have to be, you know, it is part of a fundraiser, so they are donating some of the proceeds back. That's why we would allow them to do that. I think if, we just have to understand that if other businesses said, hey, we wanted to set something mobile up, we might have to go through a process to consider that. That's the one concept that, the one door that you kind of open by doing this that we would just need to be careful of. This is, I think, a little unique. This is like, it is a mobile business. It's a, you know, it's not, you know, it's not like they're selling it out of the back of their trunk or something like that. And so that's probably the, that's one logistical, you know, thing to consider. The other one is just us kind of looking, probably talking with our admin team about best places to put it, so it's not, you know, in the way of parent or bus traffic. And then probably more for the high school, probably some middle school, is addressing things just so we're not setting kids up for something where, oh, we're just selling to staff? Or like if a kid, could a kid go buy a coffee? And then, or are they gonna buy a coffee? Then they're gonna walk in the building and they're gonna be asked to like throw it away before they go to class, right? So, like I said, I just want to avoid setting something up like that. So, so those are just kind of, not that I think any of those are insurmountable hurdles. They're just all things that we would want to probably have clearly articulated before day one. So, I guess the only major concern that I felt like it was worth having a discussion with the committee was just the understanding that, you know, I always try to be sensitive where we don't want to look like we're favoring necessarily like one business or excluding other businesses. You know, at the same time, it is a fundraiser and, you know, there's other fundraisers like, you know, we might do a Yankee Candle fundraiser. Well, there's other candle makers, but Yankee Candle runs the fundraiser, right? So, so I think it's not, you know, I think it's doable. And if other businesses wanted to offer, we would, we would listen and see if we could work something out with them if it was a fundraiser.
We have had other verbal talks, like for instance, the fountain has shown interest on doing like a night at their business and kicking back a percentage, like kind of the restaurants do. So there is still, you know, the interest with the other businesses and whatnot. This was just a unique opportunity where they can come to the schools. And I thought it was a great thing because it gives the teachers and staff and faculty that option to not have to worry about, oh, do I need to get the coffee ready at home? Or do I have to try and get to Dunkin's? Or no, you're right there, I can get it, I can get in. You know, one less logistical thing to worry about because it's right there, easy access.
So, what's that?
Is this require a vote?
I don't think it requires a vote. I just wanted to make sure we talked about it. I mean, if you wanted to make a motion, I'm sure you could. But I, if you want, we could just, I think we could probably move forward and pilot it. And just if there's any, you know, we'll try to work out the logistics. And then if there's any issues that come from it. I just wanted to, I just wanted it to be known, like publicly, that we've discussed it. We understand that, and I think the message I think is important is we're not trying to specifically endorse or favor one business. This is a fundraiser opportunity. And if there's other businesses that feel, they'd like to try something like that, they should certainly can reach out and we can try to establish a fundraiser opportunity with them to.
I mean, we could certainly entertain a motion to support said fundraiser and have you, you know, trial it. But I think it's under your purview and your staff, Dr. Meyer, I don't know.
No, as long as there's no objections, then, okay. All right. All right, so our next steps then will be to connect on some of the logistics and talk and think about dates, locations, that type of stuff, okay?
And my favorite coffee plate.
She remembers all of them. The only other thing I just wanted to note is our next meeting is November 7th at 6:15 at the central office conference room. And before that, we will be offering from 5:30 to 6:00, a volunteer training for this elementary school for many parents, parents or volunteers who have not had the opportunity last year or this year to already attend one, so that we can get an early start, so they're not trying to figure it out when the field trips come out of the year and everybody's ready.
Great job. Thank you. Anyone from CPAC or LPAC? Dr. Meyer, the floor is yours.
All right. So for staffing updates, we did have one new hire. Pradeep Dev was hired as a grade eight, long-term math substitute. So it was a long-term sub. And we did have one resignation, Kevin Rafter was a middle school art teacher. He resigned, I believe, to pursue a high school art teaching position. Tri-council meeting topics, I always just try to put that there because we don't really normally livestream the tri-council or anything like that. So, you know, we did have a tri-council meeting prior to this meeting. That is a meeting of the three school councils. The school council's role is spelled out statutorily about looking at, trying to help identify student learning needs, having some input on the budget, reviewing the handbook and developing a school improvement plan. So, tonight we kind of kicked it off by reviewing some achievement data and looking at, reviewing the goals for the year. And then we finish it with some view of the new building. So, all, pretty much all stuff that, most of that data has already been presented to this committee. Some that hasn't, the percentages is in your packet here tonight. So a lot of it's already been, been shared with you. But overall, it was a nice turnout. It's always nice to kind of see everybody who volunteers for those committees. So, following the academic achievement is the next topic. We do have the, those slides that I shared in the tri-council meeting on the elementary, the, sorry, subgroup percentages. There's an elementary school one, middle school one, high school one. What I would say is I think my message tonight, I think, was that I think the overwhelming majority of our data was very positive. I think all our schools are trending in the right direction. Almost all of our, all of our subgroups really were, all but one, I think, had some pretty significant gains. In most tests, we had pretty significant gains, I think, except for one subject, one grade. So, I mean, overall, I think it was a positive year. I think it's, that's a reflection of the, all the steps we've been doing and all the work our staff has been putting in to help implement things like the high-quality curriculum, the interventions, the whole multi-tiered system support model. So I think it's really, you know, kind of coming together. Also in your packet is the AP data I shared at the tri-council meeting. You know, we still have, so we still, we gave 119 AP exams last year. That's still significantly more than we had, say, like five years ago. It was a decrease from last year, but last year was sort of an anomaly, large year. It's the same as we had in 2022. But more importantly, I think, not more importantly, but of note is it's the most qualifying scores we've had, where 57% of our students who took an AP class actually had a qualifying score on their AP exam, which is a score of three or better. So, that means that maybe we didn't have as many, as many enrollments as the previous year, but of those enrollments, more than were successful. And then we had the New England, oh, in your packet too. I shared this, this was in your packet last, last meeting and I kind of just, I kind of got stuck and I forgot to draw your attention to it, so I put it back in here. This is a letter that was dated September 24th from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. Just, it's, the high school had to submit a special progress report and Clinton High School is getting their, has their accreditation continued. So it's a pretty, I mean, it's a fairly standard letter, but it, there is work that the high school has to do to maintain that and their staff did it and they worked on it and they maintained that accreditation. Financial updates. So I didn't really give a lot of financial updates at the tri-council meeting. So tonight I am joined by our business manager, Annette Cologne, who's gonna go over a little bit of what she prepared for you for our financial report. So what you have in here, you do have the quarter one budget report. This is sort of our line-by-line with the current expenditures and encumbrances. And then there's a little bit on school choice and circuit breaker. And it should be noted that a lot of times, you know, this is, this is quarter one, so a lot of the encumbrances are sort of like a best guess. And as we go through the year, we keep refining those encumbrances and they'll get more and more exact as we go and we'll get a better projection. So, Annette, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to highlight?
Going in the same line of the conferences. Typically, we can project the rest of the fiscal year about December. It's like when we have pretty much all the hires and all the resignations. So right now, expenses are based on contracts. And what we have over up to the first week of COVID, and those are gonna be moving along as we keep going through the year. Salaries is pretty much based on the first payments in the fiscal year, but it's gonna be adjusted in separate. I don't know if you have a specific question. Some of the lines is a little negative, but it's just the beginning of the fiscal year. So those are gonna be adjusted as we go.
So if you look, I mean, if you look the bottom line right now, general fund, we're still, you know, we're projecting that we have an unencumbered balance of $513,000. Doesn't mean that's like an excess. I'm sure a lot of that will get encumbered as we go through. But that's, that's showing where we are right now, based on what we know right now. So we are, our circuit breaker and school choice, we're kind of projecting them to sort of offset each other by just a little minimal, based on who's in those accounts. And so the total operating, we have that $514,000 that's unencumbered at this time after quarter one. And then, as Annette said, it's usually kind of, December, when we start really looking towards building the next year budget, is when we'll, the next time we'll really try to sit down and probably look at these encumbrances. And at that point, because really, what's hard about the encumbrances is we've only really got like one month of being in school. Even though it's the first fiscal quarter, the first two months, we weren't really here. By December, it's almost like you have like a quarter of, you have three months of, of school. So now we can more accurately project the salaries and the tuitions and the transportation and all those types of things, so. And then, what's the next one you had in here, the school choice?
The school choice, the numbers that we have here are basically, it's like a 24. Basically start with those numbers to expand on 25, what we receive every, every month. So monthly revenue is about 32,000. And they do an adjustment in December. So if we get school choice in, that number is gonna go up. If we lose them, it's gonna go down. So they do the adjustment in December. So, that is gonna reflect on December because we get it at the end of the month. So for December, we typically get it with January 2nd, so they go like that. And they do another adjustment in June, just to close the year. So, last year we got like, in June, we received like $19,000 just to close the year instead of like the 32,000. And that also, we're gonna have access to the revised list of sending and receiving districts. And that's the second page where we have all the districts and how many students going to the district outside and what we're receiving from other districts.
So Steve, as of now, there's a net of about, was it 19? We're sending 19 more out than we're receiving in, is that about right?
Right now, yeah, yeah. And remember, we had to, I mean, we've closed school choice for our elementary grades because of the capacity, so. The, you know, if you look at the sending districts on that next page, you know, you got Hudson, Berlins Boilston, Neshoba. Those are the main ones that you kind of have people going out to. And then, you know, receiving, the students that are coming into our district, basically come, we got Neshoba as well, Lemonster and Wachusett are kind of the big ones in Pittsburgh. So, that just kind of gives you, I know people ask that a lot, you give them app. I don't know what the, I don't know if we just had a large cohort graduating or what, but you can see that Lemonster went from, you know, they were sending, FY '23, 23 students were coming here from Lemonster, almost 24. And FY '24, that dropped to 13.4. So, I don't know what, what changed those people's minds or people moved or combinations of all those, but that was a significant change. But that's, so, you know, we are monitoring that because we need to make sure that that's, you know, obviously the school choice in and school choice out is, has direct budget implications. And then, the next page you had was circuit breaker, right?
Circuit breaker, so the way circuit breaker works is we do the fiscal year claim. So last year was fiscal of '24, but we receive it following year. So, the net reimbursement was 1.6 million and it was up about 443,000 from the previous year, which gives us some potential funding to help us next year if we have the bond on tuition and transportation.
And I would say, the only other thing I'd add to that too though is we typically use this funding the year after we receive it, right? So it's sort of like, I was trying to explain for us, we try to stretch it out as much as they'll allow us. So basically, our FY '24 claim is received in FY '25 and we typically don't budget it until FY '26. But, we can access that money in FY '25 if we need to. So if we did have any type of, like increasing out of district tuitions or something this year that were unexpected, we do have this additional funding that we could tap into if necessary. And because it's higher than what we budgeted last year, it really wouldn't affect us necessarily as a revenue source going to FY '26 fiscal year. But if we had increased intuitions, obviously that would still be a carried expense we'd have to have.
Have we ever been in a situation, since you've been here, where we, we kind of pulled some of that money forward early? Or has it always been able to be?
Pretty much, we've always been able to roll it over, yeah. I just know that that was one of the things when we made an adjust, when we tried to, when we got our final budget number last year and we were kind of reining it in, one of the things that we did sort of tighten our belt on was some of the projected special education placements. So that's just one of those areas that in the back of my head, I'm sitting there going, as we go, as we watch this fiscal year's budget, if we, if we end up in a situation where we're going over, it's probably likely gonna be there. But we know that if there's a case, if we have to, we can, we could tap into this because this is a larger claim than we've gotten in the past.
Any transportation expense that we would see different from what we have today because of the negotiation of that contract coming up, wouldn't be this year, it'd be next year, right?
Right, any of that stuff would all be built up for next year, yeah.
And because out of just the transportation, the claim now on the circuit breaker, we were expecting at least 75% reimbursement, but it brought it down. This year was 44%. And I don't, I don't believe it's gonna be going up anytime soon.
So what happened, so what's happening across the state pretty much is, is the cost of transportation just continues to go up just as the cost of, just labor and everything goes up, right? So, what happened with the state was their intent is to fund it at whatever, 75 or 75%. They allocated an amount in their, but it's all, it always says, "subject to appropriation." So they allocated an amount in their budget that they actually thought was the 75% when they did the budget. When the actual claims came in, they were only able to fund 44% of those claims, so. So they spread it out so that everyone gets something, so. So that's how that, that's why that adjusts, right? So there's, there's a, there's the statutory percentage, like, you know, for a lot of these things. And then there's the actual percentage because almost all of them have that line, "subject to appropriation." So if they only appropriate so much money and that only funds 50% of it, well, you get 50%, so. But that's.
The intention was to go 100% as the years went by. But now with the costs going so high, I don't think they're, they're gonna get there for transportation.
At least not yet.
Tuition, tuition is 75%, which they did.
Yeah, they've been doing better on the tuition, I think, yeah.
So for this year, pretty much we're even. So our expenses are kind of around 22. And that's what we got last year between the use and totality.
Yeah.
That's what we need. And even though it looks like we are in some of the tuition, especially, we have the private school day tuition in the second, we have an overbudgeted by a hundred grand, but considering all that we, we still have 250 rate in the positive. So that's about like, if we need to like call it two students going on this year.
Yeah.
So, it's still going down. We just have to, we have to, we have to go around in a few weeks just for what we have.
And we, and I guess I would say, when I bring up the fact that we could go into cover that, I know that we have some kind of, with, based on the needs of some of our students, we have some that are probably gonna be referred at some point this year. So it's just a matter of when those tuitions hit us, like when do they find a place and when do that. So, it's just something we're keeping an eye on and we just, we're aware of it and we have a plan if it happens and we'll be fine. All right.
Thanks, Annette.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only other thing I listed under financial updates, which I have in there, is just a letter. Just letting you know, we were awarded another $80,000 for the Apple Seeds Materials and Professional Development. That was a continuation grant. So I just try to keep you guys informed of those grants as we get those award letters. CMS building project update. I did go through the video that was posted on our webpage and social media and stuff during the tri-council meeting. That's the current rendering. I do want to, you know, I know that when we post things like that, there's a lot of questions that come up and people ask about this or ask about that. I just want to stress to people to realize that, you know, there are a ton of meetings going on right now on every aspect of that building. You know, like I said, we look at, literally, we're looking at like the nurse's office and meeting with the nurse to say, you know, which, where exactly do we want to put the exam room? Where do we want the door? Do you need a window looking into that room? Like, all those little things. And a lot of those, a lot of those meetings, you know, not only do we have like the staff, the design team, myself, the principal, a lot of times there might be another consultant in there. There was, you know, we had a whole presentation on, you know, how to pick playground equipment so that you make sure you're getting, you know, appealing to different students with a variety of different movements and opportunities for social play and opportunities for, you know, being by yourself, that kind of stuff. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of thought going into everything. Things are reviewed for safety, for code, all that kind of stuff. So all of that is, is going in there. And I would say that, based on a lot of the material selections and things that were going on right now, we are looking, you know, generally, and I know, Matt, you correct me if I'm misspeaking here, but generally, the updates from the building committee meetings are that as we're, as we're kind of finalizing some of these materials, generally we're, they're cost savings. So it was carried in the initial estimate at, you know, this. And then now as we're landing on certain materials, usually that's being done with an eye of, "do not exceed," and they're coming in, in less. So, doesn't mean there's not gonna be a more somewhere down the road, but every time you can, you know, gather those lesses, it helps you stay on track, so.
Yeah, and I think what they say the most to us is, you know, once we get to that point where they say, the foundation is poured, as an example, like everything from that point on becomes a much more. point on becomes a much more, much more of a fixed cost. Like, it's very predictable at that point. So, I think everything we're doing between now and the time that that foundation gets poured is where you would expect if there was going to be something that would be a variance, it would be there. So, so far, so good, because most of those variances have been in our favor.
Yeah. All right. The MAS C MAS S conference is November 6th to 8th. So, a big chunk of your packet here is actually just the agenda for that conference. I think, Matt, you're going to that?
I am.
I'm going to that. I think I think Bill Conley is going to that as well. So, you know, we'll try to probably, the three of us will probably try to look to kind of divide and conquer and make sure that we get to the breakout sessions that we want to get to. If there's anything you see that you're really interested in that you want one of us to try to get to, let us know. But typically, we try to sort of split up if we can, you know, if there's three that look good, we'll try to split up so that we can bring up bring everything back and and share. Food service summary. So, I kind of wrote it as a recommendation. I know, you know, I think the committee was kind of leaning this way, and I tried to go back and synthesize some of the information. But I'm I'm recommending that we post to fill the soon-to-be vacant food service director position in order to keep food service operations managed by the town. And really, a big part of it is the fact that, you know, I kind of outlined some some, you know, different reasons there. One about fiscal financial solvency, you know, with lunches being free, I don't think there's a there's a, you know, we're not in any type of financial crisis that we need to really look to like get bailed out by somebody. Employee recognition. I think our employee, our employees have done a lot over the last few years. And of our 21 cafeteria workers, 15 of them are members of the Clinton retirement system. Nine of them have have health insurance through the town. So, I think we wouldn't want to impact those workers negatively, so they would probably remain Clinton employees anyway. So, I don't think that's a, you know, that wouldn't be a much of a change. And I think that providing the best services for our students, you know, I know that there might be some advantages with a private company, but I also think at the end of the day, you know, they're not doing it. It's not charity work, right? They're trying to make a profit where we're trying to provide a service. So, I think that, you know, we know our students the best about what works, what doesn't on the meals. So, that would be my my recommendation, that we move forward and post. If it's not completed by his retirement date, I'm comfortable pointing Beth Armstrong, who's is basically assistant of the food service department, to be the interim food service director until we complete the process. And and like I said, the last thing I said is just if we can't find a satisfactory replacement or if anything changes, there's nothing that prohibits us from revisiting this anytime in the future. You know, it's just, I just wanted to at least have the conversation about it since, you know, it's the first time we've had sort of a change in food service director in a long, long time. So, are you guys, I mean, it's really kind of keeping the status quo. So, I don't know that I necessarily need a motion, but I just is the board comfortable with that recommendation?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So, we're going to kind of just stay the course, and I'll go ahead and post it. And in your packet as well is a sample of the job description that we'll most likely be posting and probably posting this week. All right? So, that's in there.
Awesome.
AMSA follow-up. There were a few questions on AMSA regarding our numbers. And so, in here, there's also a breakdown of our charter school tuition. So, yeah, the answer is, we do pay about $13,000 a pupil right now for charter school. And we were trying to do that math on the fly last meeting. The the thing that to note, though, is, I mean, most the largest one, you can see that I don't have the FY '25 numbers yet, but the previous years, you know, the overwhelming amount go to AMSA. There are a couple that go to other non-AMSA charters. Usually, the ones that they go to are either Sizer or Parker School. And then, like I said, the charter tuition reimbursement is kind of weird, sort of phased in by each year. You get more the first year a kid goes, and then it kind of phases out. So, I just wanted to share that so you can see that that is now that when I say that we pay that, like, the the town gets assessed that in their like cherry sheets. It's not like that doesn't go through our budget. We're kind of like vocational tuition used to kind of go through our budget, right? This is kind of taken off the top. This is an expense the town absorbs directly, still an educational expense. And then, I kind of shared some of the reports from the DESE that got those numbers from. And then, there's a sample letter in there that we sent to AMSA parents, and then a sample of a survey that we sent to AMSA parents, asking them for that. I think I asked them to get those, please respond by November. I just had it in the letter there. I asked them to please respond by November 1st, which is Friday. So, the goal is to try to summarize some of this data, at least get you some preliminary numbers prior to our November meeting. So, we just tried to follow up on that when the conversation came up from the last meeting. And I think that's all I have.
Steve, thanks for getting that out so quickly. That's great.
So, I just have a good question on the tuition reimbursement charter tuition reimbursement. That comes from like the they're trying to help us with the tuition?
So, it comes from the state. And I think what it's supposed to do is it's supposed to kind of like soften the blow a little bit, right? So, that's why it's like phased out. I think it used to be, I don't know the exact numbers this year, but it used to be like you got 75% reimbursed like the first year, then 50, then 25, then nothing, right? So, the idea was if kids enrolled in these charter schools, it wasn't going to be an instantaneous, like, financial burden on the sending districts. I think that was part of how they were doing it to just support charter schools in general, to make sure that it wasn't minimizing the negative impact on the districts. So, but you can see, it's not not quite enough. It's based on that sliding scale there. Yeah. All right. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. As far as our report, it looks like we have dates in here for all of the or almost all of the subcommittee for the next meeting. So, that's good. Steve, I think we had talked to like November-ish or heading into like for policies, procedures?
I think we wanted to wait until after the conference.
Yeah, after the conference, right?
So, we'll probably schedule something at the November meeting, because normally, the conference gives us some good policy updates of what we should be targeting.
Steve, did we move the safety committee, or is this is this the day we moved it?
We moved it to Halloween. Yeah, that's a it was it was supposed to be Wednesday, but we moved it to Thursday. Yeah.
Okay. No, I'm good. I thought you were just in November.
Is there anything outstanding from a facilities perspective, Steve, that should be on our radar?
Uh, I'm not sure. I'm sure we have a update from Brad coming up or from facilities director Farragor coming up soon. But I don't think there's anything.
Yeah, I couldn't recall anything.
It's hard. I feel like I feel like I spent half my life in facilities with the new building, but we got to still maintain these ones, too.
Sure.
Right? So, and then budget, we'll probably be kicking that off soon. And negotiations, we're making some progress sort of behind the scenes to kind of get all that groundwork so we can really hit the ground running come January.
Anything under old business? Anything on our new business? Nothing on our new, Steve?
No, I'm good. I spoke for like an hour already.
I'll take a I'll take a 30-second spot opportunity to thank the the athletic director, the booster club, all our fall coaches, the athletes. You know, it was a it was a busy week of pink nights and senior nights, and it was great to be up at the complex, what felt like every night, to to just watch these kids play and and get recognized. And I think all in all, everybody involved did a great job, and I think the kids had a great, great experience. So, we had great weather, like, it was, I think it was cold maybe one night out of all the nights we were up there. So, kudos to to the staff and to everybody that put all that together for the fall sports, and we'll look forward to winter sports coming up with it. So.
I'm sure we'll get same thing. We'll probably have Athletic Director Goldman come give us a little fall recap and winter kickoff sometime in that November, December range.
Yeah. And I think tomorrow, all the rankings should come out for fall sports that are making the state tournament.
For the playoffs, yeah.
So, be on the lookout for social media and where you can go support your your local teams. I will extend a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Thank you, everybody.
Wow, you got applause. Just because it was over.